Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, August 13, 2024. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes of reports received in five?
We do not have any this week.
You wanna do, you wanna wait on our reports and everything and go right into the judge? Okay. And we will, we will go down to new business. Discussion of Circuit Court Budget.
Good morning and thank everybody for coming here early and helping us out.
Did you bring donuts?
I did not bring donuts. It was on eight. My understanding was if you have an eight o'clock meeting, bring donuts, but after which, everybody's on their own.
Wait next year.
He'll do better next year.
Yeah, I'll do great next year.
That's right.
But I'll be having a donut for you on that day. And now, we appreciate you getting us in early. This is the 50.640 meeting we have to have with the commission with respect to budget. What I thought I would do is go through the court stuff first. I've got the other people to answer the questions, then we'll talk about juvenile, which is kind of the large portion of what we're doing. Starting with 151, that's the circuit court or the circuit clerk. The only odd thing I don't have on here, and for some reason I didn't print out the second page of this, is our post office box rent has increased. And I think we have, my recollection is like 600 in it, and they'll need to go to, what, 900? Or what?
1,200.
To 1,200? All that's just to get mail. But the rest of it, now, what I did not do is make adjustments for the communications, because we have no control over that. You know, the internet cost, that's pursuant to the agreement that we've had before about splitting that, and we don't have any control over that. But in terms of the other things, the other budget categories, we're within those, and we're proposing the same thing as we had the year before. They told me this morning, we have right now 22,000 Monsanto cases. That, I don't see any sign of it letting up.
It keeps going up.
You know, and why, we're just fortunate enough to be the center of activity for all Monsanto. The impact that that has is that actually increases the fees that we get. And that's reflected in kind of what we think it will be. If, once the Monsanto balloon is over, then we'll go back to where we were before. But the interesting thing about the court's budget in general is, before Monsanto, for the roughly $80,000 to $90,000 we sent to the state of Missouri, we bring back, at this point, it's probably close to $3 million in payroll and benefits. So, you know, with a few exceptions we'll talk about, the payroll and benefits are paid by the state. And so, we certainly get back much more than we give in terms of that. Mark, you're gonna address, we've got one county part-time slot, and Mark is going to address that.
I know you insist on going on and on and on and on, and I would request we do it again. I have two people that were doing this. Actually, one was doing it on county, one on state, and they both went on medical leave. I have hired one, but she doesn't know half of what she's doing compared to what the two were. So, I would request that we could have that again. We're just now starting on 2013, 14 files in the basement, stuff prior to me even coming here. So, but we are going through them, we are clearing them up. We're, we made it to the basement finally, and got everything upstairs cleaned up, so. So, I would request getting that 16,000 back so I can keep my part-time employees, and I can continue to clean up the files prior to me.
Hey, Mark, does that include this stuff over at the Mercy Services Building? Is that part of the time we're working on that?
No, basically, the only thing we're doing with that right now is getting the files for the expunchements. But we do that with Deb, with Ann, and my two, the two of my clerks.
I just noticed while I've been over there that that is cleaned up significantly.
Ann has done a great job, and we have, if you go in Jenny's office right now, there's a couple, six, 700 files in there where we're going through.
So, the attic is cleaned, cleaned up.
The only thing I know in attic is probate, and I think there's some traffic up there, which I can get out in a heartbeat if you tell me you're ready.
There's some stuff back in that very back corner, too. I don't know if we can do anything with it, though.
I can get, I can have my stuff out of there in a couple days easily, if you're ready to go with it, so.
So, we were doing this under your predecessor as well. Are we ever going to?
I can't answer that, Sam, because I don't, I don't think I'll ever keep up.
If you're only at 2013.
Right. I'm just saying, we're getting another judge. That might be a good place for another office up there, so.
Right.
Right? No, there's, we're not gonna put anybody up there.
But no, I don't know, Sam, because the more cases, with us adding 20,000, 20,000 more Monsanto cases, that's just more clerk work, and that's less I'm getting done with the old stuff.
So, this will just go on?
It could go on.
Forever, perpetual?
But this is the only money I really ever ask from you all, so. I don't ask for anything in the middle of the year.
I mean, if you go over there and look at it, there's a lot of it that's been cleaned up. It's not there, and that's what that was for, is get that stuff that's cleaned up. It wasn't to try to keep up with new stuff coming in.
And then, we're, on a daily basis, we're trying to clean up the old jail where all this stuff was stored prior to my coming in, too. You can at least walk in there now. So, we're, but we're doing that ourselves, so.
I mean, the saving grace is, if you think about it, any circuit that traditionally had 3,000 civil circuit cases, or 3,000 circuit cases every year that we handled, to put in 22,000, it would take about five rooms of paper if we had to do this on paper. And then, so that's, we're doing it with less than the 70 clerks that they recommended that we have.
Right.
Based on the workload. So, is there any questions about that part of it, of the budget? Like I said, the change that I don't have reflected in BSNF is for the post office.
Additional 600 bucks.
Yeah. We'd take it to 1,200. But the rest of it, I think we can live within that. Okay. We're going to, let's see here, this would be 153. This is essentially the court's direct. The only two changes that we made here, other than communications and those things like that, was I raised both the meeting travels and dues and equipment maintenance, both of which we're gonna need for the new judge. With the new judge, because it's a circuit judge, brings a court reporter, and a court reporter brings, you know, not only just another office, but it brings, you know, they've gotta belong to the certification group, they gotta have a machine, they gotta do those things like that. And each of those machines get annual. We have software that gets licensed annually for the real-time court reporting, so we can do that. You know, I can't get more exact, that's my best estimate, because it goes up every year, and then we've gotta add, you know, basically a third more for the fourth court reporter. So, that, and one of the things that I hope is supported is that we ship new judges off for training. One thing is, they don't really train you to be a judge. They just give you a robe and tell you to go, and so, we're looking for those kind of opportunities. But in terms of 153, those are the two big changes that are there on those. While we talk about jury script, we budget 65. We don't really spend that much each year, but we do have two death penalty cases in the files. And if we have to try one of those, that's probably 125, 150,000 endeavor. We've never put those in the budget, because even the one I thought we were gonna try, we didn't try, except for a bench trial for three days. But you just need to know that that's out there, and if we get closer to that. One case is a Cole County case, but the judge is the judge from Columbia. So, as best I can tell, that's gonna remain a Cole County case that has impact on how much influence we can have on the cost of the process. But that's out there, and we'll come back and keep you apprised of how that goes. But other than that, you know, that's with respect to jury script. Okay, going to 154, which is pre-trial. What I've done here, we've struggled to find comparables, so we've got comparable work and everything else like that. Last year, we landed on looking at probation and parole. We think that that's much more comparable to what we're doing. And we found that our salaries with the change we made last year are in the range. And so, all we'd be asking for is the COLA on that. And I've put it in estimated three, because that's the number I got from Mark. So, that's, you know, in terms of that, we don't think we need any more staff. Okay? And we think that, you know, the COLA on the payroll is about it. The rest of it, again, the same thing with communications that we've talked about to do that.
The only other thing on there is there's a part-time position that is under pre-trial that is to assist with that on the treatment court. We funded the last couple of years, we didn't fill it. We recently, you know, we recently interviewed. We ended up not hiring once we first interviewed, so we've got some more interviews Friday. We'd like that to stay in the budget. That's a need, that's been there to help our treatment court administrator, who otherwise is a one-person shop. But you guys have funded that the last couple of years. It's through here because it's a part-time, and they don't have to, the treatment court doesn't have any other.
They have its own line.
Line, so, thank you.
So, what we're proposing is basically, the part-time person that pre-trial has now, and the part-time person that we're sharing with drug courts. And so, everybody is aware that that's not a full-time position, that's two part-time positions, because with the full-time comes benefits that we're not asking for. So, it will be two people. The last is 155, which is the marshals. Again, we're sort of in the same position as we were before. I have increased the budget for a sixth marshal to go with the sixth judge. And then, using the salary model that, based on where we were at the sheriff, we looked at their line budget, we were comparable with them based on experience. And so, the only thing that we're asking for is the COLA, the 3% COLA on those payrolls there. Budget-wise, I asked that we maintain five in meeting travels and dues. I've got a new, they will have a new marshal, which will require some training when that becomes available. And so, I've adjusted that to reflect what that was before. Other than that, like I said, same thing on communications, everything else remains the same. We believe that we are replacing, as you well aware, the x-ray, the package briefcase x-ray, not the people x-ray, machine. And that's usually about $4,000 a year for the preventive maintenance. And the reason we do that is because we already lost one machine for lack of preventive maintenance. And that's the machine we had replaced in 18. So, that machine is on order, that's the one that you guys approved some marijuana money for. And so, it's our hope by the end of the year to have that up and going. What that'll do, we think, will help us speed through the lines a little bit more. We've already replaced the walkthrough metal detector and then this piece. So, that's what that line item is for maintenance. But the only change really on this one is, is asked for $5,000 total for meeting travels and dues. Any questions about that?
I think, you know, we were talking about the new x-ray machine. I don't know if we asked or not. So, is there, can we sell that to another county that maybe does not, I mean?
I have no idea. I mean, the...
I'm just curious.
I mean, yeah, I think that the question would be is how much care we use when we remove it? As far as that, we've kind of held the other walkthrough metal detector. Really, they had no idea what we'll need at the new prager, or whether that would be something we could use at the new prager. So, that's, but it's something that, when we get, when we actually get the machine here and we can look at, we want, certainly want to remove it in a way that maintains its operability. So, I mean, it would go, I would assume would be handled like surplus if we didn't have a county need for it. But I don't have any, any handle on the value of it. The last thing, and before we get to prager, is, you know, I put two things in capital funding, which I'm at a loss to put a number on, and for all kinds of reasons. One of which is, and I know we're in the middle of work on that, is replacing the prager building. The second thing would be chambers and courtroom for the sixth judge and an office for the court reporter. Everybody's aware of the need. You know, if we put a trailer in the parking lot, I don't, you know, there's all kinds of ideas that are out there. You know, we're sort of brainstorming in the building. I think we'll get the sixth judge before the end of the year. So, we'll figure out how that works. And then, the only other challenge we have, of course, is we're, you know, gonna repaint and re-carpet in the courtroom, and that'll slow us down and make it tighter for the last two months. So, any questions about those items?
Judge, when we talked about this a week ago, how did we leave that library fund? Potential usage of the library fund for some of the...
Well, right now, we use that, you know, that's what we're using to, you know, keep and update the technology. You notice that there's no technology that's listed there. We use that to replace, replace the copier pre-trial. We've replaced a bunch of stuff like that. I don't know how long that money's gonna last. I mean, that balance is higher because of the Monsanto. But we're looking at also moving some of that money to the Family Court Services Fund to solve some other problems that we have. So, it's, you know, I can't tell you how long, I mean, it's not consistent enough. It's only in the last couple of years that we've had a balance of any significance.
But you could tap that for some of the things that you might want to do that you wouldn't come back to us for.
And we have.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, a new judge will need a new iPad for on-call. Some of that stuff could come out of that fund, and it's...
Yeah, I mean, there, I mean, you know, a new judge will, assuming you have a place for them, the county and the state will give him a computer for his desk. But to do anything.
For her.
For her. And I guess it will be a her. And the, at least one. The, but the one you have in a courtroom, that's a county machine. They don't provide that, but you can't conduct court without it. We have, you know, we're moving to put sound recording in Judge Walker's courtroom, which is the only courtroom that doesn't have that. What that does is allows us to maintain electronic record without a court reporter, because right now, I don't know where we're gonna find a court reporter, and Columbia wants two also. So, you know, the demand in between Columbia and Jeff City right now is for four, four, full, four court reporters.
The other advantage that we'll have is, because we will have six judges with five courtrooms, any judge can use any courtroom. We don't have to worry about whether there's a court reporter, whether there's sound recording. And we're working on the schedule for that. Working with Dan mostly, and just talking about both case management. So, we don't have to, you know, come marching over and say, "Okay, now we need to build another courtroom roof" or something like that. That's...
Other questions? Okay, well, the last thing, then, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Meyer, is juvenile's budget. And we thought it was best to bring it here at this time, because basically for the needs involved with it, and that's the only way that the county gets any review on it, is if we do it this way.
And for the record, this could have been brought at this time in prior years.
Oh, yeah.
It just wasn't.
We didn't, and the big reason was, particularly when we were running the treatment programs, those are all programs that, you know, I think that the county gets involved and those, needs to be involved in those decisions. Where we're running, you know, sort of optional stuff that's over and above detention. But we're pretty much down to detention, and the emergency treatment we do is just, what we do is, we do it with essentially the same stat we use detention.
Correct.
And the only benefit is, it's better for the kids that we can use non-secure detention. And if it's emergency placement, it pays a lot better than detention.
Helps offset the costs.
Yeah, I mean, we try to, you know, offset the costs. I mean, there are no giant revenue streams in anything that the courts do, although we collect a ton of money. We collect for everybody, don't we, Mark? We collect the child support, we collect judgments, we collect taxes and things like that. But that's why, yeah. We could have done it before, and then, this year, I think we need to do that. So, I will turn this over to Ms. Meyer to talk about juvenile.
The two points notable, and I did send you the email with a summary on 8/7. The two points that are notable is the professional service line and the salary line. The professional service line, we have typically budgeted for 3,900 hours at $50 an hour. We've ran into a situation where we can't get attorneys to take appointments because of the $50 per hour allotment. The surrounding count, and we also only pay for very limited billings. We pay for an hour of court appearance, hour FST, an hour for an in-person client meeting. The surrounding counties pay $75 an hour, and they pay for whatever's billed. So, when we were looking at options, whether we would increase to $75 an hour, we would open what's billable, we settled on increasing the number of hours from 39,000 to 5,850, which is an increase by 50%, at $50 an hour. If we kept it at 3,900 hours and went to $75 an hour, the outcome is still the same. If we expand both to compete with surrounding counties, it goes to 438,000 rather than the 292. So, what we're looking at doing, what we're proposing to do, is expand the number of hours that we're funded at, and then adjust how we allow the attorneys who serve the county to bill.
We're being, I mean, we are running into roadblocks getting lawyers. I mean, we're way below market. We had cranked down what we allowed, more than I actually thought we were doing, which is, if you do a lot of juvenile, how we were paying is probably makes a lot of sense. I mean, I did a ton of this work, so I looked at, you know, at that time where we were trying to pick functions and play, you know, flat amounts for those functions. But as we broaden it out, and we have to get lawyers from other firms, we get lawyers who may have one or two juvenile cases, so that we can get coverage. And they can't, they can't do enough juvenile that it makes sense the way we were doing it. So, we, you know, we're gonna have to expand it, because I can't have a hearing if I can't have a lawyer. I mean, I'm required to appoint a lawyer for that. We do, we do free training every year to recruit lawyers. But we're just, the feedback we got as we tried to get more lawyers in here is just that, is we don't pay enough. And so, it makes it very difficult for a law firm to say, "A new associate could come do two or three cases," and with the way we reimburse.
I've been doing this work since 1998, and this is the first time in probably the last six months that we've been unable to conduct hearings because we don't have attorneys. We are bound by milestones for these hearings to hold hearings within timeframes, and we're not meeting our milestones at this point because we can't find attorneys to take the cases, which represent the children and represent the parents of the children.
We've lost several attorneys to surrounding counties. I can think three or four who only do cases in surrounding counties, because it reimburses at a higher rate than we do.
Who are willing to serve our county. They just can't afford to take the pay cut when there's better money than the surrounding counties. Do you have any questions about that particular line item? The other is the salary line. Over the last two years, you've been very supportive in raising salaries in different positions. The remaining would be the youth specialists. They are currently at 32,938 and 34,000, depending on the, 34,938, depending on their experience level. I'm asking to take those to 46,000 and 48, respectively. Same request I made last year for the same reasons. We've got DYS comps that start at 43,48 and 46,422. These would stack us just slightly above them, so that they could not steal from us, and potentially, we could steal from them. Though we are still lower than the jailers, and the work is comparable. The numbers are not the same, but the work is comparable. They have better means by which to control their population. We have really no means by which to control our population other than connecting with the kids and asking them nice, basically. So, we feel like due to the risk, due to the hours, and due to, due to comp pay, that that's a fair and reasonable ask.
I had a head start on the other two commissioners, because Mark and I, Sheila, met with Judge Bead and Toby last week.
Yes.
So...
And we developed these the way, same way that you're developing comparables for staff, you know, in other county positions. I mean, it's not like we ignored that part of it. The problem is, you know, I guess what we learned in the jail was, if you get it high enough, people will come work in the jail. And that's, I mean, the problem is, I mean, it gets bigger than that, and I'm sure the ladies can explain this better, but when somebody doesn't show up, you can't not have somebody at the place. And, you know, we're trying to get where we are not competing. I mean, in the court system, we went into all this effort, we got all those salaries up, and then the state cracked the money again. I'm losing court staff to the AGO, to DNR, to MoDOT for five to seven percent more, so.
But Toby, your competition is the state.
So, my competition when we're at 32,938 is anybody who really pays more due to the risk level. I mean, this is stuff that has feces thrown at them. They've had urine thrown at them, they get spit at, they get assaulted. They have very little means by which to control the population. If they even with, consistent with their training, inner restraint leaves bruises on a youth. They get hotlined. We've got one on admin leave right now who's been with us for several years. He does fantastic work. He's on admin leave pending an investigation because a youth made allegations. So, when you're paying 32,000, 34,000, they can go to Target and scan, scan, work at the scanner and make better money.
Well, okay, your, your competition is everybody. But how many have, how many of your youth services people have left you to go become a jailer with the sheriff?
We've had one that recently applied that I know of.
So, I'm suggesting that although the jailers over there make more than your folks do, that's not really your competition.
Honestly, our competition's the community, because I have a fair amount of folks. I've got one who's left to go to Menards, one who's left to go to work at the Dollar General warehouse, several who have left to go work at the state, some who have went to work at the hotels. What I will tell you is, the lady who left to go work at the hotel is making the same money, but nobody is cussing her out every day, and she gets to leave when her shift is over. She is not required to wait for a replacement to come in.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that there's not a raise in order here. What we'll probably debate is the size of the increase. And my feeling is that generally speaking, I thought from our conversation, the state worker, what's it called, Division of Youth?
Division of Services.
DYS.
Yes.
Is, we have those two numbers that you brought to us. And I think your, your compensation to your folks should, should match those, which is a considerable increase, but it's not as much as you asked for. Mark, could you step up here and maybe refresh my numbers from yesterday that you and I discussed?
These numbers came straight, well, you even brought them up again. About 43,4 and 46,4, so.
And that's kind of the way.
I'm kind of on here, I, let me just throw it in there. That's a big raise from what you're currently paying. Could you try that, see what that does for you for keeping people and retaining people? And if that doesn't work, come back to us, come back to the commission?
Raise it directly equal to what the youth specialists are making. So, certainly, it's an improvement. We're willing to work with what you give us.
I mean, I'm just the budget officer. I don't make the final decision, but that's my... I don't make the final decision, but that's my, that would be my recommendation to the commission.
Which will work right until the point the state cranks it up again. And that's, that's what's happened to us the last three years.
Well, when, when will they crank it up? They'll crank it up in next fiscal year.
You would think so, but, you know, they've done it in the middle of the year before.
Yes, they have, and they, they've done a lot for corrections, maybe mid-year, but not across the board for everybody. So I, I think those numbers were forty-three, four, and forty-six, four. Were those the state numbers?
Yes, state numbers are forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents for the youth specialist one.
Okay.
And forty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-two and forty-one cent for the youth specialist two.
Okay, we could go to the penny if you like, but I just rounded them as we were doing some numbers.
Was this something we have to decide now?
Not this instant, but we've only got a couple of days, right?
But I was just looking at the statute again. It says we have to meet with you at least fifteen days before September first, which is the deadline. But I think maybe we can go up to when the submission date, September first, to agree on it.
Yeah, that's what I think, I mean, I think that you gotta have the meeting so you have enough time. You have to have this conversation. And so, yeah, I think we've got some time, I mean, to do, to that part of it. But, you know, yeah, it is a large number, but, you know, this is the population we didn't do anything for last year.
I get it, thirty-two, that's way too low. I mean, that's, I don't know, what is that, even minimum wage fairly? I don't even know what minimum wage is, but it's, yeah.
Thirty-two thousand is fifteen dollars and eighty-three cents an hour.
So this is kind of new to me, I'm sure it's new to Eastern Commissioner Helscher, because, you know, we received your budget late last week, I guess.
I've been talking to Toby, she's brought this up before, but this isn't new at all. Kind of saw it coming, I didn't know what the number was gonna be.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we talk about the attorneys too, and if you can't get them and they're showing up at court, then you have to send them away because you don't have an attorney there.
Well, you know, there's, I mean, there's that part of it too. I mean, that affects everybody. What really does is it affects the kids. We can't resolve these cases.
So that's kind of where I was gonna go with that. If we have attorneys there, we get some cases resolved, we get some of the caseload off of some of our tubenol officers and stuff. So it's, where do you start at? Do you start at making sure we've got the attorneys in there so we get this caseload taken care of?
I mean, there's, there's all kinds of stuff that we're working on. I mean, we've got, you know, we've got programs to divert kids, we've got programs to minimize that. But yeah, you have to go somewhere, but ultimately it ends up in front of the judge, and if I don't have enough lawyers, you can't do any.
We have applied for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for, to help offset the professional service line. I don't know when we'll hear from that, but we have made application through the Missouri Bar to assist with that professional service increase.
And they're developing some way to attach some what they call four E. money at the state level for attorney assistance. The first round of it's not been very attractive, what they asked the county to do in exchange for the money, I thought was pretty egregious, but I think that that will shuttle out in probably the next year. And so, so I've involved Judge Stumpy in some of those conversations. We can look at, you know, we're, we're looking for resources everywhere we can go, but we, we've just hit this barrier where nobody will do it. And it's a, probably accelerated this year. We had one lawyer who did a lot of work and did it for the reason most of these people do it because it's important work, not because you're gonna get rich off doing it. And for health reasons, he left the business, and that's really thrown us, that was a lot of, that probably was, probably was in sixty, seventy percent of our cases.
Yeah, so we have to replace him in those cases plus keep up with incoming cases. For capital improvements, we have two I T. items, copier, hard drives. I sent the estimates for those, the eight hundred and sixteen for the copier, sixteen thousand four hundred for the hard drives. There may be, there may be replacements. We're not certain they'll need to be replaced in 2025, but we did want to put them on your radar just in case. We do have another grant that we applied for, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, that we would use for both of those items if it comes through.
Did you send this to Brian as well? Because typically, anything computer-related goes in his budget.
Yes.
Not in a separate, the capital budget usually has one lump sum for it, all his stuff, all computer-related, then additional items.
We did go through Brian for both of these. Ours also has to go through O S C A. because that's where our equipment comes from. But yes, all of this communication took place with Brian.
Okay. I think the last, I'm gonna try to hurry this along, but then there's, there's your salary that was discussed.
Correct.
And, and I will tell you that my, my thought process on that was what your ask was for your people and what Mark and I crunched numbers, I'll drag him into this conversation. Your ask and my response to that ask, and it's only me, not these two yet, was about ninety-five percent of your ask, somewhere in that neighborhood. And I was gonna start there with your ask on your salary at about ninety-five percent of your ask, which is approximately ninety-one, five or something like that. And I think your ask might have been ninety-eight, five, or, does that sound right?
Yes. The ask that, the ask for that position was based off of, in the last two years, all of the other, every one under has, has been raised up, and so those numbers came directly off of that, the request that, the adjustments that had been made for the salaries under. It is less than the surrounding as well, but I'm perfectly comfortable with where you've settled.
These two gentlemen have to digest things that I've already digested.
I've kind of been left out in the cold, so I don't really, I'd have to pick.
Well, you know, if we had two of you at that meeting with the judge, we could have had this whole room here with the judge, so.
Well, then, then we'd be having a meeting.
But we had to have the head start last week.
Right, I mean, we've tried to do that, we've tried to keep everybody in line and then send them, you know, what we, what our asks were, and then purpose of this meeting is ask, you know, where do we get our comparables?
I know when I sign your pay forms, I'm, I'm, like, how do you find people that will work that cheaply? So in that respect, I, I, I understand that, and I understand where you're coming from. I just need to.
What was the date we have to make changes to it? Y'all said a while ago, I think.
Well, drop dead is probably the end of the month.
Yeah, I would think drop dead.
September first is the deadline to get, for everybody to get their budget's initial.
So you've got a week or two to think about it, but.
Talk about it some more Tuesday, but then any changes that we make, do y'all have to agree to it? Or you can say we don't agree.
The purpose I have in this meeting is, is so we can get input from you guys on these, you know.
By September first.
By September first.
If we don't agree, then, then by statute, the resolution is go to the judicial fight.
So we've, we've got a couple of weeks to do that, but the, you know, we gotta have this meeting, and you gotta have it, you know, to have any more than one commissioner there, it's gotta be a public meeting, so here we are. So we can talk about those things. I can't see who's behind me.
We were just saying that that goes to, if that goes, it goes to C C B C.
What goes to C C B C? Goes to Judicial Finance Commission. That's not C C B C.
This one does.
C C B C is our internal way to argue about things. So this is, I mean, this is where we gotta have it, and so we can have this, so we know where you guys are.
Yeah, I think we're close enough that we won't, in my opinion, we don't need to go that route. There's just maybe one or two items.
The salaries and the attorney fees, is that which ones you're talking about?
Yes, I think that's exactly what.
I personally have a problem with the attorney fees. I don't really have a problem with salaries either, I just.
Option two on the attorney fees?
I think the attorney fees are lower.
Okay, so.
You have to live with, I mean, you're in that arena with them every day, you know, you have a better idea of what it takes to get the talent in here to do the work. So I defer to you guys on that completely.
So just the salaries, we wanna revisit. If we have any changes we wanna make, we need to do it, talk about it Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with everything, yes.
Okay.
And what?
I can put a placeholder on the twenty-seventh of this month for the, for our commission meeting.
Two weeks from.
To accept them, the budget.
Why not do it next week?
Why not put it on for the twentieth?
I'm just giving you two weeks.
Yeah.
Don't give us two weeks, we'll use it all.
Take a week, and then if we have to do it another week, we got it.
Yeah, if we need to come back and thumb wrestle or something to get things figured out. I think we can get something figured out, so. Okay, so salaries is probably the only thing we gotta discuss and any changes that we wanna make, right? So.
We thank you for your time, we thank you for having us early. I gotta go visit all my friends in the Department of Corrections next. Glad to see none of you there.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll go back.
Toby, thank you. Regular scheduled programming.
Go back to our, yes, Commissioner Committee liaison reports, coming in, events.
All right, I've got an H B A. board meeting this afternoon, planning commission meeting tonight, H B A. general membership meeting Wednesday night. We've got our Missouri Association of Counties summer board meeting Thursday, Larry Oak's Falcon football fundraiser Saturday, St. Thomas picnic Sunday, and Board of Realtors Political and Economic Responsibility Committee meeting Monday. About it.
Tomorrow, perhaps, we have an extended meeting, United Way event, if the weather cooperates.
I did ask Matt yesterday when they would make a determination to call it, and he said by this afternoon. Is he in here?
I'm here.
I think right now the weather's talking like, what, eighty, ninety percent rain tomorrow.
This is the man with the plan.
So here's what we're gonna do. We got an email into the golf course to see what options are for reschedule, and we'll pick a day that we'll go with. It'll probably be two weeks from to now, from now roughly. Don't wanna push it out too far because we get past the time that we gotta have stuff turned back into United Way. But if it's too soon, then people can't do it, and it messes up their schedule. So we'll get something out by the end of the afternoon, if not sooner, once we get a date picked, and hopefully everything goes okay, but so. But it kind of depends on what comes of this afternoon's weather forecast, and we'll get about two o'clock.
Does that move the lunch and also?
It'll move everything, everything, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, depending on how that turns out, I'll have a salute twenty-four slash twenty-five, I guess, because we're starting to look at salute twenty-five meeting tomorrow. That's what I have to add to what you have.
Yeah, I've got, tonight, H C J. has Mark Schreiber speaking on Forgotten Shadows, which is the prison. Yeah, Wednesday I have the golf tournament. Thursday, I'm not going to the state fair. Saturday, I'm the program for the Sons of Union Veterans. And then, Saturday, and then Sunday I will be at St. Thomas. Appointments by commission, reappointment to the Care Leave Committee, Larry Vincent, Chairman.
Just, just real quick, asking for the reappointment of two members to the Care Leave Committee, Kevin Light and Patricia Nilges. Their terms expired, so asking you all to reappoint them.
Make a motion to reappoint Kevin Light and Patricia Nilges to the Care Leave Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, do we have any commission comments? New business, Council Payable Review.
We're not having this week.
Okay, discussion of tax levy for 2024.
Well, the public hearing is set for next week, Tuesday. It's been advertised in the paper. U S. County Commission set two tax levies, the general fund levy and the public works levy. I did send you guys some information on that based on the assessed valuation and the sixty percent rollback that we have with the general fund, sales tax. The, where I came up with the tax ceiling for twenty-four is what I'm suggesting. For a general fund, it's going from point oh four eight six, that it is in twenty-three, to point oh four six two. And that is a reduction, and it's a reduction because of the increase in sales tax and that balancing mechanism we have to do with that rollback. So, and then in public works, their ceiling was at point two seven seven nine, and I'm suggesting that that ceiling go to point two seven eight three. And in a real world, if everybody paid their taxes, which we know they don't, that is a decrease for the general fund of over thirty-five thousand, but it would be an increase for public works for about forty-five thousand. Again, if everybody paid their taxes, but we know that doesn't happen. So unless you guys have any specific questions, I mean, this thing has to go through a formula with the state auditor's office, just like every taxing jurisdiction has to do. So I think I sent you that court form.
You know, and you emailed that?
I've seen it.
I saw it too.
The assessed value didn't go up very much at all, but it is not an assessment.
Right, so the general goes down because of the EMS sales tax.
Yes.
And then public works went up.
Basically for new construction. I would say that that's where most of it lies.
How long has it been at the, the current number?
At the current number of the assessed value or the levy?
How long's the levy, the, oh, I'm sorry, the road and bridge levy been at its current level? How long has it been there?
Two seven seven nine.
At the ceiling for as long as I can remember.
Well, but you said raise the.
Yes.
We've been below the ceiling, haven't we?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not raising the ceiling.
No.
We're going to the ceiling.
Yes.
How long has it been where it is today?
At the point.
How many years has it been there?
Oh.
I don't think you've asked for a, a raise to the ceiling before.
No.
Okay.
No, never have since I've been here, that I can't remember.
All right. We have to do this on or before September one?
That's right.
Okay.
And it had to be published in the paper, so it was in the paper. And so, yes, I'll bring it up next week and ask you guys for approval of it. Open the hearing and then close it, and then.
Photo.
Photo.
Got it.
Okay.
That's it.
Second, final reading of budget adjustment number six.
Number six, this is for twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. This is the EMS Enterprise Fund, and I do need action on it today. It's for the firehouse safety grant, or the grant.
Okay, good. Make a motion to approve the budget adjustment number six for twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars with the EMS Enterprise Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, signing the surplus title for a total vehicle.
Remember, this is the vehicle of the sheriff's department, and we kind of got permission to go ahead and sign over the title to the travelers for this accident. So Sam?
Have any questions?
All right, we'll get it with it, Eric. Okay, make a motion to sign the surplus title for the two thousand twenty-two Dodge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first reading of budget adjustment number eight.
This is for two hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. This is just the first reading. This was the grant that EMS received, and this is for the, oh, it's the ARPA grant that they applied for. So no action today, just advisement for ten days. And then the first reading of budget adjustment number nine is for twenty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars. This was the sheriff's department ARPA grant, and I'll bring it back up in ten days. This was the Sheriff's Department ARPA grant, and I'll bring it back up in ten days for approval.
Approval to run a sole source ad with CPI Telecom.
We're just needing approval to run a sole source ad for CPI Telecom. They'll be supporting our existing phone systems, and Brian can go into more details.
I could have said it better myself. So, we kind of discussed this, but with Lumen deciding to move, changed directions on the phone system support, uh, we had to, actually, the manufacturer, Mytel, reached out to a particular vendor, had them reach out to us, um, which is not going to be such a bad thing. It's, it's approximately fifty percent of what we were paying for better coverage. So, I've just asked that we go ahead and get the sole source approval, uh, so we can go ahead and run the ad and things like that.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, run the sole source ad with CPI Telecom.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Senate Bill 190, November ballot discussion.
All right, I put this on the agenda because I've been getting a lot of calls, emails, uh, visits out in the street too, and I know you can get the petition signed and done. I just want to skip all the rigmarole and I would like to see us put the ballot issue on the April ballot without having to get all the signatures and just get this done. So, if we can pass a commission order for election on the matter and have it decided then.
Jeff. November ballot, isn't it?
Well, Steve, is it too late for the November ballot? Or, no, the, yeah, July 27th was for the August ballot. I'm sorry, for November ballot, correct? Yes, thank you, for the November ballot. So, and I don't know what the date is on that one. Is that August? Twenty-seventh, then, okay. So.
Can you show me in the statute where we're, we have the authority to do this?
Can you show me where we don't have authority to do?
I don't have to. I mean, there's a lot of things we don't have the authority to do, and the statute doesn't say the commission cannot do X.
My position would be that if a citizen's position could place it on the ballot, which would require the commission to pass a commission order calling for the election on the matter, then it was implied power of the commission to do that same action without a citizen petition. So.
I disagree.
I, well, I know you and Sam do, but I wanted to bring this up because I've been getting a lot of calls about it, and we can get this on the ballot, we can take some action now. I know before we were waiting for something with Senate Bill 756 to clear up some answers, and we've got some answers, and I just think we have an opportunity here to go ahead and just get it on the ballot. You still have an opportunity to get signatures and put it on the ballot, I won't disagree with that. So, that's just where I stand on it.
Well, I, I'm good for April, the April ballot, mainly because, um, I think we do need to get the petition, you know, petitions supportive of referendum on such a credit is signed by at least five percent. I checked with the clerk's office, and it's the, the percentage who voted for the gubernatorial in 2020. So, it's a little, actually, a little more than two, or a little less than two thousand signatures we need. I've actually signed the petition myself. So, um, but I think, you know, the schools, um, our fire districts have not weighed in. I've actually had people, um, who are not in favor of this because of, of the, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's yes and no. I, I would like for the.
I'm sure there's some people that are not for it, but this isn't, we're not taking any money from them, we're going to freeze it.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I'm just going to put the senior citizens, head of the taxing entities out there, so.
Yeah, I, I want the people of Coal County to vote for it, and I'm, I'm all for that.
But you're for a signature petition to get it on the ballot, not that you're okay putting it on April ballot and not November. Because you said you're good with putting it on April.
Well, I think, I think by that time, it gives, it gives, it gives the, well, we'll have more than enough signatures, and it also gives the schools and our, the tax entities that, that this will affect time to, to, to speak as well, because I haven't heard anything from them yet.
Well, Senate Bill 190 passed a long time ago, I would have thought that they, and I say a long time, it just seems like a long time, but it's passed long enough ago, if they had some kind of say in it, that they would have said something.
Yeah.
So, we've got some hands raised out there.
Whether it's November or April, it doesn't go into effect until next year. So, I would rather be, you know, be more cautious and do it the, the proper way than, than. Yes.
Sam, I'm Bob Lee Dunn.
Yes.
Could you come to?
Doug and I.
Maybe come to the table, just because it, the microphone will be picked, yeah, your, your voice will be picked up better.
Doug, you want to tell me what your thinking is on?
My name is Doug Miller, for those of you that don't know me, and I'm the guy that's been burdened with getting the signatures for this petition. And it's my understanding that if two of you guys would sign off on this deal, it would be put on the November ballot, and everyone would get a chance to vote on it, and I wouldn't have to do all of this, okay? This is a burden, I work every day, but it's important enough to me to make this happen. Now, my understanding is Jeff is good with putting it on the November ballot. Sam, you've told the newspaper, you just told us that you want the people to vote on it. In November, it's not going to cost us anything to put it on the ballot. In April, it's going to cost you twenty grand. I don't understand why you wouldn't want to do that. And, uh, it's, it just doesn't make sense to me. In November, everybody's going to vote, which in April, you don't get much turnout. So, I think it would be a whole lot better to get it on the November ballot, and let me stop doing this, because this is going to happen whether you guys want it to or not, obviously, because I've got a lot of signatures, there's a lot of people in here right now that are here for this cause and want you guys to just sign off on this deal and put it on the November ballot.
And it's important to know that, just like Doug said, the voting pattern is going to be, give more, a lot more people during a presidential election to vote on this thing, to decide. And I think the people should decide because it was passed by the Senate. I think it's the people's decision, not anybody else's decision to do it.
And not to mention the counties around us that have already approved it for themselves, Boone County, in fact.
Fifteen counties out of a hundred and fourteen in the city of St. Louis have, have, are in the process of enacting this. So, basically, you've got a hundred counties that, that are still kind of looking at taking action, I would assume. But, but the majority of the counties have not, have not put this on the ballot yet.
I understand that, we should be a leader in that though and get it done.
If, if it is placed on the ballot, and if ninety percent of the people vote for it, that still doesn't make it the law of the land. We still have to adopt an ordinance. That doesn't take away, it, it doesn't automatically make it happen. You still have to have two or three votes up here after you've successfully, uh, uh, people have, under the approach that you're, you're talking about.
I understand that.
And I will say this about Boone County, Boone County put it on the ballot, was it in April? So, I called, uh, the Northern District Commissioner, and I said, "What give you the authority to put this on the ballot?" And her answer was, "Well, the law didn't say we couldn't." Every other time that this commission has the authority to put something on the ballot, we can find the statute that allows us to do that, whether it's EMS sales tax, capital improvement sales tax, there's a special child of sales tax, I'm, I'm just stating what it is. But this commission has said a couple times before I got here, "We're not putting it on the ballot. You want, you want it on the ballot, go get your signatures." And I don't think we have the authority to put it on the ballot. You show me where we have the authority to put it on the ballot.
Well, I'm not the one that decides that.
It's not in Senate Bill.
I was just told that's the way that it would work, if two of you decided to do it.
One, one county has done that, Boone County.
Yeah.
If no counties had done it, I probably wouldn't even be up here arguing it. But, and I hate to say I want to follow Boone County's lead, but I want to follow their lead, they're up there, they did the dirty work for us. I haven't heard any lawsuits or anybody throwing out the results. So, I'm willing to go out on a limb and say, "Tell with it, let's get this done." I pretty much knew I was fighting an uphill battle today, but I did want to bring it up. I want to let folks know that we are out there fighting to get this done, or, you know, I am, and see if we could possibly change your mind. I didn't bring any doughnuts, so I didn't think it was going to happen today.
Here's another thing to keep in mind with respect to Coal County.
The whole purpose of this is, I don't think it's that big a deal, but it's a big deal for people that are on fixed income.
Right.
Especially, a lot of them are on a lower fixed income, and anything we can do, you all can do up there to help these people, two hundred dollars might not mean much to you, maybe a savings a year, but a lot of these people hurting, and we need to show them that we're going to help them a little bit. The law was passed in the state of Missouri, it was passed, it said we could put it on there. They are, we'll sign them up on Boone County, I know for a fact, I've talked to people, that they have to go up and sign a form that they qualify for, and it's being done right now.
But it won't go into effect this year at all, it's, so my thing is.
It'll go into effect in 2025.
Yeah, so my thing is, I would, I would rather wait, and I know it will pass, and then I will, I will, um, sign with our Eastern Commissioner. But I, I do want, I want the public to, to, to vote on it, and the process to get it on the ballot is to get two thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight signatures, one thousand nine hundred and eighty signatures.
So, if it gets passed in April next year, they would get a tax credit in 2025? Or that, that would carry over, that would be another year?
Well, Larry.
That, that would depend on what you set the effective date in your ordinance.
After it passes, or if it passes, whichever way it goes, if it does pass, then the commission would have to establish an ordinance, and in that ordinance, I believe you all would have to establish the effective date. So, if it passed in '25, you could make it twenty-five as the effective date, as long as it passed. If it passed in April, that would probably allow us enough time, because it's going to take coordination between the Recorder's Office, the Assessor's Office, the Clerk's Office, and the Collector's Office in order to put something like this in effect.
I don't want to get too much in the weeds here, but let's just, let's just jump to next April, and somehow it's been adopted by Coal County one way or another.
Can I say again that it doesn't cost us anything to put it in November, but it's going to cost taxpayers twenty grand to put it on in April? I mean, why do we want to spend that money? I mean, everybody that's paying homeowner's insurance right now and groceries and everything else and trying to live on fourteen hundred dollars a month is what I draw on social security. Now, granted, I've worked my whole life, and I do have a business, and it doesn't, I'm not getting rich from that either. But if you're on that fixed income of making fourteen hundred dollars a month, this means everything to everybody that's on that, and there's plenty of them out there. They don't want to lose their house over taxes and insurance. I mean, it's just ridiculous.
Couple of things. How about someone who lives in a half a million dollar house, has a couple hundred thousand dollars a year of income, and spends half the year in Florida, Arizona, or Nevada? Are you worried about them?
The half a million dollars is the cap.
No, it's not, there is no cap.
Wait, where do they live?
Yeah, it is.
There is no cap.
There is no cap.
Where do they live?
That's not what I read.
This is a primary residence.
I didn't say that, I said they spent half a year in one of those other states. They live in a half a million, they live in a million dollar house here. You cannot limit this to, to certain values.
But the people that don't have the money, you're going to penalize them for the people that do have the money?
I'm sorry?
That's not the majority of the people.
No, I know, it's not the majority.
There's always going to be exceptions. No, I'm, I'm not for penalizing anybody. It doesn't, won't go into effect, so whether we vote on it in November or April, it's going to be the same timeframe, so.
Except for costing the taxpayers twenty thousand dollars to put it on the ballot.
Why would you do that?
I just.
Let, let me clarify something, I'm Larry Vincent, I'm the collector. I followed this bill from last year with 190 and 756 this year. I don't know if you all have read 756, the savings to the taxpayer is going to be very minimal. The first year it will be nothing, because in seven, in 190, they were setting the effective date as when you turn sixty-two. 756 changed that to the effective date being when the commission passes the ordinance. And that's when you establish your base value. So, if they pass this in 2025, the base value is going to be what your taxes are for 2025. 2025 is a reassessment year.
Yeah, I've also read that.
You have, you have no savings in all, at all that year, and probably no savings in the following year, because there's reassessments on a two-year cycle. Your first savings would probably be in 2027. And then it's not on the assessed value, it's on the amount of taxes you pay. So, it ends up being based on what the levies are the year that you're taxed in.
So, and Larry, I agree with you, I mean, we've had unlimited discussions.
I just want to clarify that, because everybody thinks this is going to be a big savings to taxpayers, and it's not going to be that way in the first several years.
Well, considering.
Down the road it will.
This paper right here tells me that whether it was the new assessor or the old assessor, they're going to raise fifty percent of Coal County's people's taxes.
In 2025.
Yeah, thirteen percent, thirteen percent increase.
Correct, but you don't get that credit in 2025, because that's going to be the base.
That's why we got to do this sooner than later.
Raise assessment, not taxes, raise your assessment.
Yeah, they're going to raise the value of your home thirteen percent.
Then there's a statute that says how you compute the taxes, there's a, there's a limit on how much it can, your taxes can actually be raised.
Now, I've owned my home for thirty-eight years.
It's somewhere like five percent, so.
And I have, I paid fifty-three thousand dollars for my house thirty-eight years ago. And to me, it's not worth a dime more now than it was then, even though it is, because of the way the economy is. But I'm not trying to sell it, so to me, it's not worth a dime more, but I'm paying higher taxes than that on it, for sure. And, uh, it's just like everybody, it's just, when is it going to stop? The sooner we pass this, the quicker we can get this done.
Actually, thirty percent of the residents, residential properties in this county have not changed a penny in value by the assessor since 2009.
Well, by God, mine has.
No, it has, I checked it out, it has not, Doug. Maybe your taxes have, the valuation hasn't changed. Maybe the taxes have gone up.
The taxes have gone up.
Well, that's because we voted for a higher tax levy.
Right.
All right, so that's not changing value. Thirty percent of the residences in this county have not had an increase in the valuation by the county assessor since 2009. If we were to adopt this this minute, we're not freezing today, we're backing all the way up to 2009 in freezing for those people. That's, that's insanity.
So, let me ask you something, one, one thing here. I want this gentleman to speak here in a minute, if you would. Jeff, if we put this, you, you don't object to putting on the ballot in November, isn't that correct? Would you vote that away to put it on the ballot?
That's going to be my motion today, is going to be to put it on the November ballot.
So, Sam, you're not for putting it on the ballot in November?
Well, we, we can't, according to, say, we cannot put this on the ballot. The, the only way.
Why can't you put it on the ballot in November?
We don't, there's no authorization in the statute to put, for this commission to put it on the ballot.
That's not what Secretary of State's Office Jeremy told me yesterday, that's not what he told me.
Jeremy who?
Well, I don't know his last name, but he's got his phone number right here.
All right.
That's not what he told me yesterday on the phone.
I want to see his authority or what he's citing, what statute.
I want this back in a minute, if you would, please. So, we're going to argue over this?
Well, if.
We're talking about a minimum amount of people, he's talking about the half a million dollar people, which isn't what Jeff City is. There's a few of them. We're talking about the average people, so.
Well, I fall into this too.
I do too.
It will affect me, so, so, but my thing is, it's even if we would do it in November. It will affect me, so, so, but my thing is, it's even if we would do it in November, it's not going to go into effect.
And he says he's not going to vote for it.
Well, that's all right. We have a lot of votes where two of us vote.
I don't think April, if it goes on the ballot in April, I don't think we'll get anything done until the twenty-sixth. I mean, are we going to be mailing checks back out for the tax credit, because the-
There, there are no checks to be mailed out by this gentleman here. He is going to give a credit on the taxes that are due.
Correct. For twenty-five. But if you approve this in April of twenty-five, you're basically going to be going back to twenty-four and not getting any kind of credit. It just puts it out there one more year, and it keeps going, and then, like you said, it's going to be tax assessments, possibly tax assessments.
So, and everything to this memorandum, if you all have seen this before, through the state, like Larry said, they're going to go up. They're going to raise them up, and they did twenty-three, and they're going to do it again in twenty-five.
The state tax commission, the MOU that our assessor has-
Supposed to be every odd number of years.
With the state tax commission, it, he has to do this with that MOU. So whether we would vote on it in November, whether, it's, it's still going to happen.
So I don't know if I'm wording that right, but if we approve it in the November ballot, we can freeze it in two thousand and twenty-four. That can be a year we freeze it, instead of two thousand and twenty-five. If it's April, we'd be freezing it in twenty-five.
And so those folks who haven't had an increase in the valuation since two thousand and nine are really having a freeze from two thousand and nine forever?
It's not my fault. I'm not saying anybody's getting cheated. Everybody's been paying their taxes at that age for probably forty years plus. I mean, I, I keep getting more property taxes, which property taxes are, I'm not crazy about at all. But what better service am I getting every time you raise my property tax? What am I getting out of it? I mean, hell, I get this old. I don't have any kids in school. My house still needs to be protected from fire, and I appreciate that, but am I, what kind of better service am I getting?
And I think the school looks like they got plenty of money. They're building millions of dollars worth of learning center out there on East McCarty Street.
Athletic facilities.
And, uh, we built that new high school, and all the fields and everything that went with it. I mean, it cost a fortune.
The citizens of the community voted for that. You're, you're asking people to vote now on something, but when they voted on a higher levy to do these capital improvements of the school district, now you're criticizing the school district for collecting more money. When the people voted to do that.
Yeah, but they said they wouldn't vote for athletic, they wouldn't do it to use any of this money for athletic facilities. And, there's going to be a lot more people vote in November than is ever going to vote in April, and it doesn't cost twenty grand.
And it gets fair, a fair representative of what the people want. See, it's not what you want here, or what I want, it's what the people want. It was passed by law.
Get, to get two thousand people to sign a petition, and you've got it.
But why should we have, we, we can get it done. We've got, we're halfway. Everybody I've gone to will sign that darn thing.
And you're making us jump through these hoops for nothing. I mean, when you can do this today and not have to do all of this, I mean, I got a good start, yes, okay? And we would get it done, but why are you making us jump through these hoops? That's stupid.
What we could do is take you guys over to the Secretary of State's office, and we could get this ironed out in fifteen minutes. If he says it can't be done, it's not right, we can go there together, and we can figure it out. And I believe Jeff would go with me, and I think Sam would go with me too. We don't need to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say that I grew up in Missouri, left, I've owned homes in Florida, I've owned homes in Kansas, Missouri, and Colorado. I've never lived anywhere where there was not some kind of a homestead for people who've owned their homes over a certain period of time, who were over a certain age. Florida has a lot of dual residents, but they don't get the homestead. If they're from New York, or Missouri, or wherever, and they go down there, you have to claim a residency, and that's where you pay your primary taxes. I think the example of the people who have half million dollar houses and two hundred thousand dollar income, that isn't even a good example. Um, I mean, most people come into retirement with fixed income. I moved to Missouri because I thought it would be cheaper. My property insurance, in the two years I've owned my home, has gone eighteen hundred dollars in two years. And we have shopped and shopped and shopped, but that's a, I mean, that's a huge, the two hundred dollars my property taxes might go up, that's easy to absorb. My electric bill has gone from one hundred and twenty to two hundred in those two years. So it's like a lot of these things that we calculated as fixed income really aren't. And I think it's a real disservice to a pretty sizable population that this isn't just a given, and I'm so surprised, because this was in the governor's state of the state address, that he had done this for seniors. I had no idea that meant we still had to get petitions signed, we had to get it on the ballot, it had to go to the county, it had- I thought when he said he had done this for seniors, had lowered their property taxes, I thought it was a done deal. So, I'm kind of surprised at the hoops everybody's having to jump through, but actually, I'm more disappointed. I, I thought when he said that in his state of the state address, it was just a given for us, so.
It would have been easier if, if the legislature would have, have mandated this for all of the counties, rather than putting it on, putting it on each county's shoulders to do this. So, uh, you know, it, it, it has fallen on our shoulders. He just signed it into, to law in the middle of June. So, we're, we're at around two months. I'm still trying to, you know, absorb all this. You know, talking about insurance, our fire districts, if you live out in the county, and we freeze their taxes, right now they're good, because we, you know. But, you know, when they have to go out and buy a new fire truck, and they, they're still, so then, then your homeowners goes up because your fire service is, is not adequate. So you've got to look at that too, but I went through that with homeowners and cars. And so then I bundled them all together, and I'm good for one year. I don't know what my, you know, because homeowners has gone ridiculously high, because we're paying for Florida and California, and all of that, so it, it gets passed on to us, but.
But Missouri does have a senior citizens' tax credit. It's been there since the seventies, but it's means tested. At some level of income, you're not going to get it, because your income has been determined to be too high, and it is a low number. My biggest heartburn with Senate Bill one ninety, Senate Bill seven fifty-six, is it's not means tested. It's not, it's not focused on the people that need it, it's on everybody.
Everybody that's sixty-two and older.
And it was my understanding that if you try to put in income levels, if you try to discriminate against certain people, because they were successful and made more money, that there's a good chance that that bill was going to get knocked down at a higher level, I'd say at the Supreme Court level or something. I don't know.
Well, we already have a law that says the lower, lower income people are getting a break. I, I help an elderly lady do her senior citizens' tax form every year, and she doesn't even have enough to file an income tax return. But she, she gets a, she, you know what, she gets a, she gets a check from the Department of Revenue. Here's the other thing. It's, it's, it's state money that funds the senior citizens' tax credit. The legislature was very generous here with OPM, other people's money. If they really wanted to give a tax credit to people, why didn't they just fund it? But no, they want to take it from the schools, they want to take it from the library.
They're not taking anything. They're just freezing it at this point.
What's that?
They're not taking it from anybody. They're just freezing it at this point, whatever.
We're all still going to pay taxes, just like everybody else.
And I've had some people go, they think they're not going to pay any property taxes.
No.
I've, I've heard that from some people, and I said, no, so you have to try to explain to them.
The argument is that it's not that much, but then you can argue the other side on the same causes. It's not that much. You can't live without it, but we're not supposed to live without it. So I'm going to go ahead and just make a motion. I don't know if we're going to change your minds, we can sit here all day, but I'm going to make a motion to pass a commission order calling for the election on the Senate Bill one ninety matter, worded in the form, format outlined in Senate Bill seven fifty-six. That would be worded as, shall the county of Cole exempt senior citizens aged sixty-two and older from increases in the property tax liability due on such senior citizens' primary residence?
Come on, Sam, help us out. Vote. Help us out.
Let the residents vote. It shouldn't be the commission making decisions.
Well, that's what, I want the residents to vote. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Let us just putting it on the ballot.
Yes, and that's what, I want to put it on the ballot. I do. I really do. I, I think, I want the people to vote, and, you know, it's the greatest good for the greatest number. People vote for it. I'm going to sign it with Jeff, you know, and again, I'm-
But you don't want to vote for it up there to put it on the ballot?
We can't.
So if there's a, there's a motion on the floor, so if neither one of y'all are going to second, then it's dead.
Dead, for lack of a second. I-
Okay, so I do have a question. Who do we guide people to to go sign this petition? Because if you can get your signatures before the August twenty-seventh date.
No, it's too late, because he has to verify every signature, and they need a month to do that, so.
So the August twenty-seventh date was not, that was the date to build the-
It's a case to have everything turned in to me, but if they turn that petition in, then we have to check all those signatures, and I have to present that to you all when there's time. You have to have it thirty days.
Which puts us back to April again, which is going to cost us twenty thousand dollars, and have a whole lot less people vote on it.
And the last thing is, if you are getting pressure from the school systems or something like that, anybody, if you were, there's going to be an increase, Larry will tell you, with this reassessment. You're going to get more tax money in, and I think we've also got new construction here in town. Quite a bit of new construction I see going on, that's going to put more revenue in there, so.
But there, I mean, just like our auditor said, there is a limit to the cap. Even though the assessment amount goes up, the levy has a limit. The counties can't have a windfall. The school districts can't have a windfall because of reassessment.
Okay.
So there is a mechanism in there for that.
But some people can't even afford the extra dollar. I mean, my electric bill in one month went from two hundred and thirty-five dollars to four hundred and forty-five dollars.
What's that got to do with this discussion?
I'm just telling you, everything in the country has gone up so high that we need a break somewhere, you know?
And gas is going to go up higher now too.
Yeah, and I mean, where does it end? We're being taxed to death.
I tried, I've-
Well, you, you appointed this, Sam didn't second you then, right?
No, it's not.
No, they died from lack of a second.
I want the people to vote for it, but I, by statute, the signature in the petition and submitting that is, is the process we have to follow.
So then you're saying what the senior, or the lead attorney from Boone County said and did is illegal? By putting it on the ballot?
I'm saying all they really had was a straw poll, is what that amounted to.
So, I mean, that's all I want to do, get a straw poll, and then we can pass an ordinance, so. I was going to do it the same way, like I said. If nobody else had done it, I probably wouldn't be up here fighting this fight, because I would, I would, I would-
So you are following Boone County, what you want to do. Put it on the record.
Yep, I am. I said it a while ago. I let their lead block for me.
It sounds like, in one case, you say, well, we don't have the authority, but you can't prove that you don't have the authority. Go ahead and do it, find out if it gets challenged.
So our county attorney is interpreting it the way Sam and Harry would like her to.
They're disagreeing with that, but I'm certain. Put it on.
No, because I've asked her how we do different things and stuff. I get generic answers, or I get told to go talk to the clerk's office, because they can fill me in on it, uh, because it's a mechanic of the ballot. I mean, I've got the emails. If, if there was a way to do it, then maybe you wouldn't agree, but she could try to find a way. She could have talked to Boone County to see how they did it, so.
Boone County broke the law.
Okay, so their lead attorney is a-
Oh, we don't even know that their attorney said they could do that.
Got an email from them.
The commissioners just probably decided to do it.
Got an email from the attorney, from the lead attorney that said that. Said that, what I read to y'all verbatim, because that's what I was going off of, so.
It's not, but it's in the statute.
Seems like if the commission in Boone County could do it, even though it could be challenged, they could try it, and it could be challenged, but let them try it.
I think we can, but I don't have a second vote, so.
Well, they need to vote for it, let them try it.
If Boone County made a mistake, they cured the mistake, because the commission then enacted an ordinance.
But they already put it on the ballot, so if it was illegal to put it on the ballot, it's illegal before, after, during, the whole time, so.
All right, but they cured their illeg- illegality?
Why can't we do that? Why can't we put it on the ballot? If it passes, then you guys can cure it and pass it, and-
The same way.
Set the dates up, and, you know, and I think they said that you could set a date in the, yeah. Well, in November for the vote, but then the date that it actually takes effect is still up to the commission to put that in place, per se. I mean, who's going to challenge it? It's, it's not like there's going to be a lawsuit against whole county for putting the ballot initiative on.
And agreeing with the governor who passed the bill.
Yeah.
Show me in the bill where it says we have the authority to do this.
I wouldn't be here if I didn't think you had the authority to do it, because I'd be wasting my time.
Well, you just said the governor's, he wouldn't have signed, well, if the governor signed it, ask the governor if we have the authority.
I got a feeling there's more than this, that you think it's illegal or something, or not legal. There's more in it for you that you don't-
Hey, I would, I'd come out, I'm sixty-two. Yeah, I, I'd get a break on this.
But you're not willing to do anything for it?
Yeah.
I'm willing to do what-
You got, you guys are elected, are you?
Yeah.
Okay. Don't you think that all of these people that want this are going to remember that when it comes time for election again? Probably eight hundred, maybe nine.
We can get them, Sam. It's easy to go to the House, and everybody signs them.
It's just a pain.
It's a pain to do it, and we can't get it. It needs to be voted on, I think, by the majority of the people, and you're not going to get it next April. You're going to get a small amount. What would you get next April on election? Fifteen percent? Twenty?
What other issues are on the ballot?
You're going to get fifty percent or more here. Aren't you?
I, I tried, I'm, I mean, we can beat this all day long if you all want to. I don't know how much more time you want to spend on it.
Well, we had thirty-four percent voted, uh-
We can move on if you want to.
Last week, so.
Yeah, everybody's worried about the upcoming election, and that's why you got a higher turnout. In April, election be over, nobody will care.
I think, I think it'll, it will pass, though.
Well.
I will guarantee, I mean, I don't know.
I think everybody's worried about the upcoming assessment, reassessments coming up too. Because, because you all admitted that, that Estes has, has kept things, or hasn't kept things up to par. So when the new guy comes in, he's going to have them up tomorrow.
But Mr. Estes, Mr. Estes is still here until August thirty-one next year. He's here on January one to do the reassessment. That's still his duty.
Well, I mean, if, if he, as you claim in the past, has not done his assessments in a proper manner, he's going out no matter what. The new guys are going to come in, and you're going to make sure it's done properly. Things will go up.
Yeah, I've heard he wants to get everything up to what market value is. Who determines that? And it's a ridiculous housing market right now anyway, because idiots are paying twenty percent or fifteen percent more than the asking price, because there's no houses out there. Sorry, I'm, I'm just saying.
No, I agree. Um, we, we came from Colorado, we were cash buyers. Uh, it was unbelievable, the competition to buy a house, and, you know.
It's a ridiculous market, and if he got his way and put it up to whatever you're claiming market value is, everybody'd have to sell their dang house and get the hell out. You know, it just doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense to not try and do this now. I mean, we got all these people that are wanting it now, not April.
I want, it won't matter whether we do it in November or whether we do it in April. It's still going to be-
I know you're saying that, but it's going to cost us twenty thousand dollars.
Why wouldn't it matter? I mean, you could put a freeze date in twenty-four instead of twenty-five, the way I understand it.
Steve, is it going to cost twenty grand to put it on the ballot in April?
Likely, yeah.
There you go. So why would we spend that money when we don't have to? That money's got to come from somewhere, so it's going to be pulled out of whatever, and they're not going to be happy about that either. But it's free to put it on now.
And you're going to get a more fair representation of the vote. I mean, it just makes common sense, more people are going to vote yes or no on it. Who knows what it's going to pass or not? Well, we, we don't know. Well, we, we don't know.
And I, I think those 62 and over definitely gotta get out.
If it doesn't.
Whether it's November or whether it's April.
But I would rather see more people vote on it, whether they vote for it or not. If they vote it down, at least we've got a good representation of the people in this county, whether they want it or not.
And it didn't cost us 20 grand to do it.
It didn't cost anything. If it doesn't, you gotta take your chances with it.
Well, I was just trying to get something done instead of kicking this down the, kicking the dan, can down the road.
Thank you.
Because I thought we could do something, and I pretty much knew where the other two stood on this, but I wanted to try, I don't want it to become a pissing contest, I want, let's, I think whatever's been said, we're not gonna change our minds today, so we can move on, if you all are ready. So, I didn't lose a vote, though, I just didn't get a second.
No, I, well.
All right.
Where do we get more of the petitions?
Well, I've been getting copies made myself, so if you come by my business, you can get some.
I will do that.
Or if you just pick up one and go copy it somewhere, I mean, I've, I've been footing the bill so far.
We can get them copied easy, I can.
My email, phone number on our county page, they can email me or call me, and if I need to get them in touch with you, I can, a little bit we can make sure, I don't think you're gonna have a problem getting them. I was just trying to save you from having to mess with that and having it on April ballot.
Thank God you tried, because.
I've gone into average neighborhoods and, and talked to the people that I know, and some of them I don't know. And the first question they ask me is, why are you having to do this? That's every one of them have asked, why are you having to go get these petitions signed? What do you tell them? What am I supposed to tell them? Jeff, you tell me a good answer, so I don't make anybody.
My answer would be, that's the way the statute was written, and what they do over there is not always perfect and works the best for us. They just gave us another judge, too, and thankfully, I'm still waiting for a check for them to help get us a courtroom for them and offices. It just, it doesn't always work out the way they intend it over there, so.
And I think you know, we're not here to save, I'm not here to save $50 on it, but it's an overall thing for a lot of the people, that I really am concerned about them, especially in today's economy. It's, it's pretty serious, and I, I dealt with them for 37 and a half years in my business, and you have no idea the amount of people that, that are over on their credit cards. They're, they can't make their monthly insurance payments. It's tough, and anything they can save sure helps them. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your time.
I guess I'll go back to work.
Thanks.
I'll, I'll come by your store sometime next week, maybe, and pick up on that, I'm sorry to spend it on Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jeff.
Alright, thanks, Garley.
I do, these are the ones that I already have signed. I got a blank one at my store. 1600 East Rattie Street.
Say it louder, so the microphone can hear you, Jill. Hold on, we got a conversation on here.
Okay. We'll move, move ahead, bids and contracts, signing of the amendment to the ARPA subrecipient agreement, Village of Centertown.
Okay, I'll just explain, we, you guys signed a subrecipient agreement with each one of these entities that we're gonna be talking about this morning, and on the terms of the subrecipient agreement, down at the bottom was the, we had put December 31st of '24 as the end date. It really, the end date is December 30th of '26, 31st of '26. And so this is an amendment to this agreement to change the date. Remember, everybody has to have their projects encumbered by the end of '24, but they don't have to have it spent by the end of '26. And if they change their scope of what they were doing in the original agreement to what they're doing now, you will see that as an item number two on these agreements. So the Village of Centertown, I did change the date, moving it to the 26th of the year instead of the 24th, and they did have a change in their project. They could not get their water project underway and approved. You guys were giving them 50,000, it was a small amount, and their project was huge, and they got denied by another grant. So they changed their scope. So they changed it to their city parks and a walkway trail, and some overlay projects that they're gonna be doing with public works. And so I would ask you to approve changing this.
Let Harry do the West Side, there.
I'll make a motion to sign the amendment to the ARPA sub-agreement for the Village of Centertown.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of the amendment to the ARPA subrecipient agreement for Council for Drug-Free Youth, and that's two.
There's two of them, one for the suicide and one for the substance abuse, and theirs is just changing the dates to the 26th.
I'll make a motion to sign the amendment to the ARPA sub-agreement for the Council for Drug-Free Youth. There are two, two signings.
Second.
I'm sorry, two signings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, signing of the amendment to the ARPA subrecipient agreement for the Salvation Army.
The Salvation Army is the same, changing the date, but they did change their scope of work, so.
Yes, Harry assumed your job, I'll let him have it.
A motion to sign the amendment to the ARPA sub-agreement for the Salvation Army.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, signing of the amendment to the ARPA subrecipient agreement for Missouri River Regional Library.
And this one against just the date.
Make a motion to sign the ARPA sub-agreement for Missouri River Regional Library.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, signing of the amendment to the ARPA subrecipient agreement for the City of Russellville.
And this is against just the date.
Motion to sign the amendment to the ARPA sub-agreement, City of Russellville.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval and signing of the MOA for Cole County IPAS.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is our agreement with FEMA and their IPAS program. It will continue our use of that system, as we discussed just later, in the later end of last month. IPAS is the program that adds on the value of nonvoluntary alerts to our mass notification system, and gives us the ability to, you know, reach out to folks through their cellphone and anything that connects to cellular device, so.
Is it MOA or MOU?
Well, they call it MOA, we call it MOU, but it's.
Agreement?
Uh, right, right. Agreement instead of understanding, yeah.
I thought it was a misprint, but it wasn't.
No, no, it's just how the federal government classified it, too.
All right. Yeah.
Are there three copies here?
Uh, three of the same copy, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to sign and approve the MOA for Cole County IPAS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Do I need to sign all three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, approval and signing of change order number one for the Viola View Stormwater
So this is the final change order for Viola View Stormwater Improvements with Stockman Construction. The main reason for this change order is due to a rain event we had on July 4th. It actually took out 130 feet of curb and gutter that the contractor had just poured the week before. Overall, this change is $19,572.54.
Yeah, I was there. I'll make a motion to approve and sign change order number one with the Viola View Stormwater Improvement for $19,572.54.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval and signing of Arden Subdivision Pavement Improvements, 2023-504-1.
So last Friday, August 9th, we opened bids for the Arden Subdivision Pavement Improvements, and the low bid was TB Dozing and Excavating LLC. Engineer's estimate was $800,900, and the low bid was $605,513.40. There was a total of four bids. This project will involve curb and gutter replacement, pavement repairs, and an overlay to Arden Drive, Mill Pond Lane, Buggy Lane, and Wagon Wheel Drive. I have talked to the contractor on this, and they are ready to go with this project, and they are actually currently working on the rainbow sidewalk project that we have under contract right now.
I like the savings.
We.
Why are they so much?
Well, they're in the neighborhood already.
They're, they're in the neighborhood, and I have had phone conversations with the contractor, looking over the bid tabs and everything, everything's in line. They were a little low on a few things, but I think that's just the nature of the game. But I, like I said, I have talked to them, and they're, they're fine with their bid and are ready to go, so.
I'm fine. I'll make a motion here, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Arden Subdivision Pavement Improvements, 2023-504-1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have any unfinished business?
Make a motion to stand in recess until 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. No close session for one.